I'm Erin Council. I have been traveling around to the different councils and also to board of county commissioners. So it's really nice to come in and see you all. I know some of you came to our open house about a week, a week or so ago. It was great to see you. And so my goal here is really just to introduce the housing authority, kind of what we do or what we have been doing for many years, but then also look at the future and what we have for some goals and what things are changing with the housing authority. Because that it's a year of, of looking at what we want to do and what we want to be and how we can support the jurisdictions even more. I included the packet, I included the presentation in your packet so that you would have a chance to kind of look through it. Because obviously we have a short amount of time and just want to make sure that I get your questions answered. So I'll probably breeze through things pretty quickly, but please do stop me and ask questions as you have. So that I can make sure you get everything answered. I left some time at the end for that as well. Next page is just a quick agenda, just really because it was in your packet. We don't need to go through that. So history of the Summit Combined Housing Authority. This is in there for reference, but just if you don't know the history, it was really formed back in 2002 with an intergovernmental agreement between Silverthorne and the county so that they could build housing together. What we know as the SCHA or the Summit Combined Housing Authority today, it was actually developed mostly in 2006 with the package of five A. And it, what is in the IGA is listed there with being committed to building, maintaining, all focused around low to middle income, which has drastically changed over the time from 2006 to now. If you go to the next slide, the, I think the visual is just more helpful. So you can see the evolution of the housing authority and kind of, we need to change this a little bit now because we're just about to add Keystone that IGA is, is moving around for a signature through the towns and the county. But just a reminder of how we're funded with the five A funds that passed in 2006. And then we're established, we're voted again in 2016 in perpetuity. So that's that point one tech, one two five sales tax that will continue on forever. At that point in 2016, there was also a housing tax that was added. That was supposed to be a 10 year to fill a gap of some more crisis type of situation where we really needed a lot of housing quick. So we had that point six housing tax that then was extended in, actually before it was, it came due in 2026. It was extended in 2024, sorry, in 2021, so that it would go to 2046. So it was given another 20 years on top of that. So I do get asked quite a bit how the funds work and how we're funded and how the towns are funded and what happens with five A money. So I looked at 2023 and I'll continue to do this in the years going forward. But just to show you how much money comes in through both taxes combined and then how that money was paid out in 2000, in 2020, 23. To just give you an idea of how that descends down and how each jurisdiction is, is paid out, along with how much is retained, at least in 2023 for the housing authority. And that funds our operations and a lot of what we do. Our budget's a little bit higher than that. We do have some other revenue streams besides the five A funds. So current areas of focus, this slide and the next slide are very similar, but this gives you an idea of what we're doing for the community. How this is a more community focused slide. And a lot of what we do, I kind of compartmentalize things so you could have a good idea of what we spend a lot of our time doing. This summer has been absolute chaos, honestly, with the application management side of it. So we, we take in all the applications for deed restricted properties. All the varying different degrees of deed restrictions that we have across the county. In addition to that, when somebody purchases a deed restricted property, they're subject to annual deed monitoring. That's something that usually happens in the fall. We are switching that system up a little bit this year and we are moving to monitoring at the annual sales or the annual purchase date of a property starting in 2025. So it'll help kind of spread the, the work out throughout the year. Because doing 1,500 properties deed monitoring this time of year, it put a lot of stress on, mostly on the jurisdictions that have a high number of properties, because they were having to review a lot of that monitoring data all at one time. So the board voted just recently to switch that around. Resale calculations is a lot of what we do. Everybody has the capability to request a deed, request a resale calculation on their deed restricted property at any time. They can do it just for their own curiosity or they have to do it when they go to sell their property. Covenant questions, this is something that came up. This is probably one of the biggest things that we do. People call us and ask questions about whether they're going to look at buying a property or there is a new development in town, or they want to know their own ramifications of retirement on their, their deed restricted property. So we manage most of those, as many as we possibly can. There are times we have to go to the jurisdiction that represents the deed restriction as well and get some, get questions answered. But we're moving to being that group that can hopefully answer those questions for the most part and have less that we need to transfer over to, to, to one of the towns. And if that does happen, we like to be that intermediary. I think in past years, a lot of times people, the community members were actually sent directly to the jurisdictions to get their questions answered if the housing authority couldn't answer them. And we're moving away from that model. Down payment assistance is something that we used to do a lot of, and then it sort of fell off when interest rates were low. And now we're seeing that come back and the housing authority board just changed that program to go from 25,000 max up to 40,000 max with a 2% flat interest rate. There used to be a, a couple of different components to that program. And so it was a little bit convoluted and difficult to understand. And we streamlined it and made it a lot easier. We also opened it up to homeowners that own a deed restricted property and are facing some maintenance or maybe a higher HOA assessment on their property. We have that loan available for that purpose as well now. And then we also manage the housing needs assessment for the whole county when that does come up. This slide's a little bit on the repetitive side, but this is more of what we, what we do for the jurisdiction. So what we would do for the town of Dillon. And so you'll see those things as being very similar, but annual deed monitoring, the properties that are in Dillon and then applications, same thing. But it's a little bit more robust on what we do for the, for the jurisdictions than what we do for the community. And then lottery management, which has been, has taken a huge increase, honestly, in the last few years, because most of the new properties are going to a lottery system because the demand is so high. So this, I think this summer we had seven deed restricted properties go to lottery. And then we also had the two large neighborhoods happening at the same time. So it was a lot of lottery work. Next slide. So this is the main reason why I wanted to come and talk to you. So the, the Summit Combined Housing Authority Board, which is made up of all of the jurisdictions, Nathan is on their board. And they spent the better part of the end of last year really looking at what the housing authority is, what it needs to be and how we can get it there. I was fortunate enough to be part of those discussions, not having any idea that this would end up being where I would land in my position. So I think it was a sort of a, an unknown blessing that that happened. Because I did get to hear from the board directly on what they wanted to see. So if you go to the next slide. So I put these into five different categories. These each have a huge build out underneath them. I just went with showing you guys kind of the, the high level part of what we're doing. I think probably four months ago, I presented to the board a whole plan on how we get to this point. And it now is kind of a living document that we work through and we can check things off as we go. But something we can refer back to, and it brought together all of those conversations of the development of the goals. So the one stop housing or the one stop shop that has been referred to multiple times and in multiple places is really the, the umbrella for this whole, the whole, all the goals that are sitting there. And it's really so that we have, we develop a location with the housing authority where the entire community knows that that's where they can go to talk about workforce housing. This means that we need to be the experts on what is happening in the community, what developments are being, being discussed? What, what workforce housing is coming available, how things are shifting, how things are changing? We don't do a lot with rental properties, but we need to know what they are and how you get into them and how people contact them. So we've done a lot of work on our website to expand that, which is a huge help. But you know, that's, that's the main purpose of what, everything that we're doing and the changes that we're making. A big part of that was moving, and I put some pictures in here. We moved to the west end of Main Street in Frisco in May. And so having a location that the community can easily find and come in and see us at any time has been a huge difference. I think we've had more people this summer than the housing, come to visit us in the office than the housing authority had at their previous location in the entire four years that they were there. So people love coming to see us, which is really nice. The database software program is a support of being that one stop housing location. We have, we are still in the midst of making that transition. We landed on a product called Homekeeper and it's in conjunction with another product called Public House. And it's built on top of Salesforce, if anybody has had any experience with Salesforce. Very robust system allows us to move to a application system where people can fill out a brief application to be considered in the lottery. And then your winners of the lottery are who move on to that larger application where we really have to bet everything and make sure, check income, check jobs, check hours, all of that. That was a huge request from the community, because people were having to fill out a large applicant, pretty extensive application for every property they were looking at, just to find out that it's a lottery and one person out of 50 or out of 100 gets that. And so, and they didn't, we didn't have a way to save their application and have it used for the next property. This system does that as well. So if somebody even, we usually invite the first three to four people that went in a lottery to fill out that application. But that application remains in the system. So if they look at another property down the road, they can just do some minor updates to the application and then apply for a new property. So time saving for everyone across the board. And that will also manage, that's the reason why we could move to a, a annual deed monitoring on the sale date instead of once a year. The database or the software program has that capability. The universal deed restriction is something we have not started yet, although we keep compiling information about it. This is not to say that every deed restricted property would have the same covenant or have the same deed restriction on it. It's more having a template that can be utilized. So if there is an income restriction component or an asset restriction component, those can be brought into the deed restriction. This is work that's being done through the next one, which is the housing task force. So this is not, the universal deed restriction is not something the housing authority will do on our own. That's something we'll do with all of the jurisdictions represented and then present it back to the board for approval. But the housing task force, I'm happy to say we had our first meeting already just last week and it went fantastic. This is the housing staff from each jurisdiction that is coming to housing authority. We had a two hour meeting. We didn't quite get through everything that we put up in front of ourselves, but we started with lotteries and reason being, because we've had so many of them. And we needed some more robust policy built around our, our lotteries. We've been making decisions with this new software program as we've gone through these lotteries. But we needed to have some concrete process in place, because we do have a lot of situations that seem to come up with those where we need to have a decision on how we're going to work through something and then document that. So the housing task force was fantastic. The, there's a couple more subjects that were a little bit more pressing that surrounding sales. And then we'll get to the universal deed restriction. So the team did agree to meet monthly, which is really nice, at least for the next several months, until we get to a point where maybe we could extend that out to meeting every other month. And then operations, this is where my side comes in, you know, reviewing our agreements with the jurisdictions. And we had a huge issue when I first came on board with HUD. We, you may or may not know, we do all of the first time home buyer classes through the housing authority and it's a CHAFA published curriculum. You have to be certified with HUD in order to do those courses. And our HUD certification was put on a restriction because there were some things that the housing authority had not submitted and had not done. And so we got all of that submitted. And I'm happy to say they gave us actually a two year certification instead of a one year. So definitely a lot of things moving in the right direction. Any questions on those? That's a huge amount of information.
I've kind of a general question. What is the range of deed restrictions that you guys use? I mean, what are the kind of terms?
Meaning what's in the deed restriction?
Yeah.
So you know, someday I'll have the time to count, but I keep telling everybody, I think there's probably a hundred different deed restrictions in Summit County. We have, you know, close to 1,700 properties, probably with Nellie's Neighborhood and Staples both coming on. And then our new database will have much more concrete numbers. But what we see mostly, the different parts is a light deed restriction that simply has the work requirement. That's consistent across the board. Every single one of them that I've ever seen at least says you have to work in Summit County. Some of them have different terminology on how much that is, but then how many hours per year and things like that. But the newer ones are saying 30 hours a week.
So is the mechanism basically a cap on the yearly appreciation for the property or how's that?
So the, the light deed restriction is, is, it's, it's subject to market. So when it goes to sell it, we'll sell whatever the market will bear. The, the, the higher number of deed restrictions we have in Summit County do have an appreciation cap and they range. You know, we mostly see between two and 3%. There are some that are a little bit higher throughout the county. They're older. The newer ones that we see are that two to 3%. And then some of them go further where they have income restrictions. So you have to be, you can't be over a certain level to be considered for that property. And then even further is an asset restriction. And most of the time when we see those, it's a, it's a lower priced property or lower priced neighborhood.
So it's pretty clear you would like a universal deed policy, the numbers across the board.
Mostly about language, not necessarily, not necessarily saying that everybody should have the same exact deed restriction. Giving, giving one, it's so confusing to have all these different deed restrictions and different terminology that's used. So it's more being consistent with definitions, terminology and the components that are in it. Like the, even just having them be in the same, the same sequence would be helpful. So you always say, go to 8.3 for resale calculation.
So you're looking for some level of uniformity going forward, which makes all the sense in the world. Is, is there a desire of that same uniformity in terms of who qualifies? And that struck me as I was reading some of the, over at Smith Ranch resales, there's, you know, 10%, you know, within the average median income, I think. And then some place was 10 plus years living in the county, working in the county, others was 12 months. I mean, are you, is, is there a goal to sort of try to uniform the requirement?
I don't think the terms need to be uniform, because I do think we need, still need that diversity of, of housing that we're delivering from a lower price unit to higher price units. And that innately gives itself, lends itself better to having some of those different components. But the priorities that have been coming about lately have, those are definitely a little bit more difficult to handle. And I think there's a lot of discussion with fair housing, if priorities are even a fair thing to do. They're nice to have because ability to recognize someone that's lived in the community for a long time or work with a certain, a certain group of workers per se. Like if you wanted to go essential workers or, you know, if we had a deficit in police officers a year from now. Some of those priorities and some of those deed restrictions that allow for priorities, allow us to, to move in those directions more easily, because our deed restrictions, you can't really change. But if you have some sort of priority element in the deed restriction, it does give you a little bit more capabilities with things like that.
And would your board set those priorities? In other words, if there was a decision to help school teachers in the county?
I think the board would, would definitely talk about it if there was an issue that needed to be addressed. But those are, those are decisions that are made currently at the town level or at the county. It's the jurisdiction that owns that deed restriction that would make the decision on how that priority is managed and what priorities are utilized, even what the deed restriction says.
One last question, are you, I mean, you started relatively recently and thank you for, I'm sure for taking the job. But are you aware of any, in the past, any priorities placed on, on any educators, you know, within the county?
I haven't, there was, there was a deed restriction in Breckenridge that was for the Highlands at Riverfront, which is a brand new development. But it has since been, it has since been amended and a new deed restriction was, was signed and recorded. And so that went away. It had an element to it that was an Upper Blue Basin component and it talked about key workers, which was listed as teachers, police, things like that. But it was, it was changed. That's the only one I know. There could be others. Again, I, like I said, there's so many and every day that I'm at the housing authority, a new one comes about that has verbiage in it that I didn't, wasn't aware of. So I'd like to see less of that.
I'm sorry, one more question.
No, please.
So it looks like some of the towns are proposing workforce housing programs and like the Forest Services over here. And I know some private employers like BGV in Breckenridge are doing their own workforce housing. And then, so it seems like there's a lot of different flavors and whoever is the builder, like BGV would have priority for their employees, I assume over other people outside of the company.
Correct. Yeah. And usually even if it's a private developer or an employer, they would still involve the town that they're building in, in that deed restriction. Because a lot of those are done through, and I'm definitely not a planning expert, but a lot of them are done through a development agreement or where they have, you know, huge requirements on what they have to build. And so when it gets the deed restriction, every time, you know, I was at the town of Breckenridge before the housing authority and every time we worked with a builder or with a new developer or a employer, they would always want the town's input on that deed restriction.
Our next phase of downtown Dillon may involve workforce housing here with a developer that's working with the town. So is it possible to carve out some of that housing for town employees and that type of thing?
You know, I think you guys have that capability with, you're, you're going to be the ones that, that approve or not approve the deed restriction itself. And that's where you have that capability to put what you want in there.
Do you guys deal with?
Be involved.
Do you deal with any of the workforce rentals or is it just?
Very few. There are a couple that are owned by the towns and we manage who, sometimes, some of those we manage on who goes into them. So we'll run an application. Part of the database software that we now have, we will have a separate application for rentals. So that is going to expand our capability. Because a lot of deed restrictions actually say that the housing authority has to approve a renter if they have the capability to rent their property. And the housing authority hasn't been set up to take those. And so now that, we, we had to build the for sale application first, but that's the next phase, which is happening now. So we're, we're building that application. So now we can tell people, yes, your, your tenant needs to be approved and they need to go to this spot to, to apply.
I'm most excited about the database. I think the database is like so great and like people will be able to go to one place and see the entire stock of what may be available and what they can achieve. And it just seems like, why didn't we do this 10 years ago?
Yeah, it's been talked about the entire time I've been at the town of Breck. So it's been at least six years now. And I think it was, that conversation was happening before. It was funny, you know, workforce housing is still pretty new for a lot of different areas across the country. And so hasn't been a lot of money invested in software that would work well enough. Six years ago, we did look at, at the town of Breck, we looked at Homekeeper and it wasn't there at the time. And now it's what we ended up going with, with this additional public house, which is a huge addition, because that's the entire application part of it. So it just takes Homekeeper to another level.
Will that be, will you request that people, like if it's not a development where you get informed that these 12 units or whatever are coming online? If somebody, say in Dillon purchases a deed restriction and we give them cash, does, is there a request to the towns that we record it with you or, or how are you going to catch up on all those deed restrictions, to get them into that database in case that house ever goes for sale?
Exactly. Yeah. And that, that is part, we've been actually talking to the assessor about, because they do a lot of monthly reporting on sales of deed restricted, you know, is going to the towns. And so I think that's probably going to be our best avenue. But we are migrating all of the current, the whole current database, which is what we've been monitoring for the last several years into this program. So it starts with pretty much everything we know about today. But of course, with the different programs we have across the county, there are more added. It's easy when it's a development, because we can just add the whole of, those we know about really well. This is, was just an FYI. This was actually something that B O C C had requested and I thought, why not just show it to you guys? And this is kind of what our summer has looked like. If, I can tell you, if we did not have this new database system, which the first full development we did in there was Nellie's Neighborhood, which is the 14 properties over in Bill's Ranch. If we didn't have the software, this process would have, what you see right here would have taken us months to do. Because even a Smith Ranch, we've had four Smith Ranch properties sell this summer. One is going, and a fifth one came on just this week. And every single one of those had 100 applicants for the lottery. So given that scenario in the past, we would have had to vet all 100 people before we could have moved on to a lottery. And so in this case, they filled out a brief question and answer that got them into the lottery. And then we vet them if they win. So much better system. And I know that those, a big part of having a required lottery is that the seller, it can take a while for the seller to actually sell that property. And that's something we've been really committed to, to making as short as we possibly can, so that we don't hold that process up. We know there's 100 people that want to buy that house. So why would we try to make the sales process be longer? So this is our new space, west end of Main Street. It's where the Summit Daily used to be. So the picture of the outside of the building does still say, have the Summit Daily signs on it. Those have been removed. The picture right below that is what it looked like when we closed on it. Some, a lot of that furniture was removed, but that's, the other pictures are all what it looks like today. The large picture on the right hand side is actually the first home buyer class that we held at this new space. And it was, it was full and every single person showed up. It was also our first Saturday class. We've been trying to expand our offerings so that we could have, they used to always just be on Wednesday. It's a six hour long class and so that doesn't meet our workforce as well as we could, because people were having to take a day off of work to come. So we're trying this Saturday class, which was turned out great. And then the next step will be having some later in the day or evening classes. Next slide. So this is, we talked a little bit about, and this probably answers your question about what's included in the deed restriction in a covenant. This gives you a snapshot of all the things that get talked about when we're looking at a covenant or looking at a new property and a new deed restriction. So you, in this was, I put this together so it was thought provoking. So you could say, oh, we need to address retirement, because sometimes that gets forgotten. And if it's silent, then you, if the deed restriction doesn't say anything about it, it's open to interpretation. Do you want people to be able to retire? When, how old are they? That kind of thing. And obviously remain in their property. Is it a development that needs to be, do we need to worry about income and how much somebody makes in order to be able to purchase that property? So this is just kind of a laundry list of what we see in the different covenants. It's certainly not everything, but it's the biggest high ticket items that we see. Making sure you look at real estate commissions. Making sure that you address capital improvements and maintenance. That's a big thing with some of our properties, they're a lot older than what we have in Dillon.
Do you have a Realtor on staff?
We don't. And the board, when I said they spent a lot of time going through those goals, one thing was to fully move away from real estate. So the housing authority at this point in time will not function as a Realtor. And will not, the, the part of the sales process that we manage is approving buyers and approving the actual sale and doing the resale calculations if it's appreciation capped. We're not going to be the ones to actually sell the property. So there's no Realtor on staff.
And typically, typically there's not a big commission at all. It's usually, yeah, it's just, you give them back to the community. So Realtors don't make money, but they help.
Exactly. And we are currently working with SAR, which is now elevation.
Altitude.
Altitude. I always say elevation, altitude. With altitude Realtors, to, we are developing an educational class for Realtors to buy and sell deed restricted, to represent buyers and sellers in deed restricted sales. And we're going to work with altitude to get it approved for continuing education. So that should be the first class we're hoping to have in the next month to two months. I think it's going to be hugely helpful. It's very confusing. And we, we talked about how many different types of deed restrictions there are. When you get into the sales process of it, they're all different. They're all different with what you can include, what you can't include. Do they have capital improvements? Is there a commission that's capped? All of that. So it is, it is difficult to navigate for Realtors, especially new Realtors coming into our community. Uh, all of that, so it is, it is difficult to navigate for Realtors, especially new Realtors coming into our community. So I love to put this slide in because everybody asks why three percent, why two to three percent? Because that's the biggest number of what we see for appreciation capped properties. This is why. Past twenty five years, we're still at two point nine three, even though the last two years have been unprecedented growth in our AMI. Um, we still, if it continues that way, we'll probably bump over the three percent, but, um, you know, we started. The deed restriction, deed restricted neighborhoods or deed restricted properties in the county started mostly in the late nineties. And then have come a long way since then, but so when you go back twenty five years and we're still at two point nine three percent, it really supports. Why you have a two to three percent appreciation cap on workforce housing. So this is FYI. This is one that I added, this was not in your packet and, you know. It's interesting because the, the landscape of deed restriction in Summit County has changed drastically and then. I would say the last six, eight years, but more predominantly the last four years. When the Wellington neighborhood and even Ofor Mountain, some of our older properties, older neighborhoods that have always been workforce. It used to be a lot of seasonal, um, lower income. People that were moving in there, sometimes young families. Um, and now that dynamic has drastically shifted and a lot of it is that. We don't have the capability for people that are here, work, our workforce groups. To actually buy into market rate anymore, that gap has become so significant. That, and that's why I have that stat up there, so a single family home, I think we all know, has superseded two million dollars. Um, for the median home price, uh, which would require an income of four hundred, over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for someone to. Afford to buy a, a market rate, single family home. Um, and even in our deed restricted homes, you know, the single family homes in Stables Village, which is one of our newest neighborhoods. Developed right now in Breckenridge, the single family homes are eight hundred thousand dollars with a full deed restriction, meaning it's appreciation capped workforce housing. So in order to really qualify to buy that property, your income has to be somewhere around the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand range. And then we recently had a Peak One neighborhood property sell for one point six five million. So again, this is what our deed restricted landscape is, is shifting to, and I have this quote at the bottom that is from Aspen. And they basically, you know, we're, we've always looked at Summit County as about ten years behind Aspen, that is shrinking. It's nice because we have a group to look at to see what our future looks like. They told us probably four years ago, you'll have one and two million dollar deed restricted properties because. Your doctors and your lawyers can't now afford the ten, twelve, whatever million dollar home, and we thought it was a joke. And, and we're there now, and so this is their, this is how they feel about deed restriction. If you're a part of the workforce, you either live in, in workforce housing or you in commute. Those are your two options now in Aspen.
Well, and even Vale and Beaver Creek, you know, they're coming in from Gibson and Edwards, the workers. So I, you know, we're gonna be fair play and, um.
All of our. Fair play, Kremlin, Leadville, the hard part is we're, you know, we're restricted because we have mountain passes going in multiple directions.
Oh, we're starting to see that, a copper, a lot of people come from Leadville.
Exactly. And the hard part about that, and, and I know it with my time at the town of Breckenridge. The, at least the town of Breckenridge is, has goals to keep their community feel. And the only way they can do that is to house their workforce in the community. Um, because we have weather and we have restrictions on pe- on roads and things like that. And so I do feel like that's something that is thought. We do still want people to live here, that work here. And have that as an option, and that number has, has been changing over time, I think. At least town of Breckenridge is where I know the statistics and they. They really wanted it to be right around fifty percent. They always had forty seven percent of their workforce being housed in Breckenridge. Um, and that number has gone down in the low twenties, um, in the most recent ones, and so. They're working really hard to try to get those numbers back up. This is our team, we're a team of six. Um, Vicky, if anybody has had any interaction with the Housing Authority, they've had it with Vicky, she is our. Our prized token person that knows everything about the Housing Authority and all. And in all of the different, um, executive directors and the different teams over time. Um, Jesse is, has been with us, the second longest, he's been with us for four years and, um. Sarah has also been with us for a few years. Danielle and James, uh, came on board just. September, October, I should have last year, and then of course, I'm the newest. Um, we love, we would love for you guys to come and visit us, our new space is really amazing. Um, I, the staff are so happy to come to work every day. If anybody ever tried to find the Housing Authority before that, it was very difficult. They were in a back. Area at the County Commons Building, it used to be locked, you couldn't even get into the hallway, that did change, but. Uh, so really difficult to find them, they had nowhere to meet with people. So people came in, you had this tiny little lobby where you could sit and talk about this very emotional intimate thing of housing. Uh, and so now we have a conference room, we have a great space for our board meetings, for our classes. Um, and it really is, it, it turned out beautiful, so it's a really wonderful place to, to visit, so we would love to have any of you come and see us. But what general question, I know we're at time, so thank you for asking questions throughout.
Yeah, you guys seem to be the storehouse of knowledge on this, it would be great to have.
Well, I, can I quote you on that?
Go ahead. But it'd be nice to have some best practices coming back to the towns that are dealing with this stuff now, because, you know, we're all over the map. And I'm sure you're seeing things that work better than other things.
Absolutely.
So it'd be nice to have a two-way dialogue with you guys.
I really hope that we're, that we are at the table with the discussions coming up with. Um, with the housing that you guys are looking at and, and looking at across the county, because that. It's helpful for us to be there from the beginning and understand what you guys are doing. I try really hard to look at what's on your council meetings and, and listen in. And understand what projects are being considered and things like that. It's hard for me to know every single one across the county, especially because you guys all now have your town council meetings at the same time. I can't attend them all anymore, um, but that is huge and that's exactly what we want to be.
This, this isn't really your remit, but does the authority have a relationship with, with the ski resorts?
We don't. We don't.
Is that something that you would like to?
We certainly can, I'm cer- I'm not opposed to it at all, I think the, have, the more communications we can have within the county about. How we house our workforce is huge and. Bill Resort should be a big. Yeah, I would be happy to. I know that the town of Breckenridge and, uh, I know Keystone, being a new town, has been working. Keystone Resort as well, but. Yeah.
You have any other questions? Great, Corey, thanks for being here.
Thank you so much for having me, I will come back anytime you guys want me to.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Good job, boy, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm next, we're, we're talking about the IGA with the town of Keystone for law enforcement services.
Uh, you wanna start the discussion or you want me to? Over the past several months, we've had some productive dialogues with the town of Keystone. And then, uh, concurrently, uh, since they have incorporated. Uh, in front of you tonight, we took a, a run, uh, at drafting, uh, intergovernmental agreement or IGA. Uh, with the town of Keystone to provide law enforcement. Within their municipal boundaries, um, Erica was able to draft this, which is great, since we now have a town attorney on board. Uh, and where we wanted to start the conversation tonight, um, is basically with the first question, whether or not. We should entertain, uh, a partnership with Keystone. In particularly with how the IGA is currently written. Is that all the assets, people, equipment, et cetera, would be ours, then we would charge back. To the town of Keystone a, a monthly rate for providing those services, whether or not that's acceptable. And then also, uh, we put together a, a budget, which is also included. As an attachment, and I do have to apologize, there is a typo in the capital. Um, it's not a hundred and sixty-three, it's more like three hundred and fifty roughly. Total, so your total cost is right around. So, the first question we have for you tonight is whether or not you think the IGA in front of you tonight, and we can walk through that if you would like to. But the way that we have it written is that we would be the contracted party to. Provide these services within municipal boundaries of the town of Keystone and then charge that back to them. Um, it is for a one-year term, we felt that, um, this is sort of new territory. Not many departments across the state are actually contemplating doing this, this is more of the, uh. How would you say it? Innovative, up and coming type things, um, we're just blessed that, uh, we have some. Individuals on, on both sides here in Dillon and in Keystone that are willing to look at this and. Put some serious thought into what this could look like. Uh, clearly, that term in termination could change, um. One of the things that we're contemplating included, that's included in the draft budget is. Um, a facility analysis and design. So, the issue that we're predominantly running up against here is, yes, we can take on providing services in the town of Keystone. But we don't have people and equipment just sitting around, so we're gonna go, we're gonna have to go hire three to four people. We're gonna have to give them equipment, we don't have extra vehicles, we need to buy vehicles, but more importantly, we don't have the space. Uh, right now, we are, uh, shoulder to shoulder downstairs, um, the space is inadequate. So included in that capital budget is a hundred thousand dollar, uh, design costs, so that'd be. Uh, the total would be two hundred thousand, a hundred thousand for each entity. And what we would wanna do is try to build a facility that is state of the art. Uh, we've had some preliminary conversations about the desires of the town of Keystone. Clearly, the shooting range out by the, the landfill is a, a primary concern for theirs. So is there a way that we could incorporate that into a, a design? So if we were to move forward with this, we need to keep that in the forefront of our mind, because that facility. And design and build is gonna have to come in subsequent years, which could change the duration of the IGA. And what that IGA looks like. Now, we talked about the budget over the past several work sessions and clearly it's a flat budget. So we're gonna have to prioritize in upcoming budgets in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. How are we going to implement this design and actually make it? Real life, state of the art, joint police station, if we choose to do this. So, uh, with those comments, I'll turn it over to Kale to sort of give a, a description of what. He and his team have been thinking to get to where we are today with a draft budget, draft IGA, et cetera.
Let's take a pause and, is anyone have any questions so far?
Um, I just, I, I, I hear what you're saying and I understand why we need a new facility. But since it's only a one-year contract, is one way to make this contract a little more appealing to Keystone, saying. At the end of the one year, it triggers the design of, are we doing this or not? Again, or, you know, like, is it working out? If it's just a trial year, you know, they're ki- they're committing a lot of, you know, fifty percent of. Looking into that, and, and if it doesn't work out, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, you, you know, the. Beginning piece of this, like this just didn't start a couple of months ago, like they approached some of us a long time ago. As Nathan pointed out, there's, there are some agencies that have done it in the past, like Winter Park Frazier's done it for twenty years. Um, ironically, they're running the same issue right now, which is space. So, no matter what we do, we're gonna have to build a facility or find a facility that can house. You know, the operation, you know, to keep it at, at its. But, I think, I think it's a really good talking point of, you know, if it's long-term. Um, some of the budgets that we looked at actually went into twenty twenty-eight. So, that's definitely not off the table, I would say that both of these are, are drafts, but. Keeping in mind, you know, the comment about the budget being flat. Um, the, the citizens in Dillon have really invested in public safety.
Yep.
Um, and, and you're seeing the result of, of that. So, two things of, we would never do anything, you know, consciously to. To affect the level of service in Dillon, because there's no lack of things going on in Dillon to do this. The other portion of that i- is our staff. You know, having a flat budget and going into a project like this, um, we're not, I'm not really interested in blowing up our staff. To help that. Um, because the people downstairs are, you know, they're public servants, they're hard, hard driven. Um, hard charging, um, and they work so hard at that, but, you know, we're reaching limits of that unless we get there.
I have a question, so even on a trial basis, would you be, have the capacity for like one year to actually? Um, have, you know, hire a couple, like, or however many extra people you would need and also provide the space and the. Just the space, I guess, like, would that be, is that realistic?
Right, so taking a stab at the bottom, just the additional positions of that. To make it more palatable, the other piece of that, you know, they're gonna have to provide space. Um, so part of that would be a substation, you know, somebody's like, oh my god, there's five thousand dollars in office furniture, well. If we're starting with a closet, we have to make it so our officers can work there too.
So it would be like a temporary space mostly.
And that, by no means is a mind-blowing concept, there, there's been substations of Keystone for years. In fact, my first tour working somewhere else, I was actually the Keystone car for almost a year. So, um, proven strategy, it can help. Um, have to, as you guys see all the time, you know, we can't even park cars, we. We have rangers that come for events, we don't have the space to do it. So they're gonna have to do, and like I said, why these are drafts, you know, there's gonna have to be some concessions and. And they're gonna have to pay their way into it. Right, and they're gonna have to pay their way into it at the level that the citizens of Dillon have done. It, it is absolutely humbling to be asked from the town of Keystone to provide that service. But, you know, since Dillon on the door now. Um, and that's for a good reason, however, you know, there's a lot of really great things that could come from a partnership like this. You know, we have a lot of similar priorities, you know, Highway Six is on everybody's list. Um, quality of life issues, presence and all, all the stuff that we talk about a lot. Um, you know, it's gotta be at the same level of service. You know, and I know that people can, downstairs can make that. Um, we just need to continue to make sure that we have enough people to meet that, that mark. So. I see it.
Um, so where my mi- mind is going and I, you maybe got me bored into my. This facility, so like if they're contracting with Dillon, is it still DPD? Or is it gonna be, is it, they're all of a sudden sharing half the burden, so it's DKPD? Or, and they own half the building and, and they're your boss too?
I, I think that's a really good question, and that's some of the stuff that we've been trying to figure out of. Um, I think that if we become partners and we provide that service. Um, there definitely would be a rebranding to a degree. Um, clearly, we're not the shiniest police department on the planet, we're not gonna go rewrap cars. But I think that, you know, if they're supporting us, y- you know, from a police department standpoint. You know, clearly, we will, we will acknowledge that in, in some way, shape or form. The building portion itself. You know, if it's split fifty fifty of that, you know, clearly there would be.
Who gets to mortgage that building?
Well, you know, it depends on how you look at it and what's available. Um, to Nathan's point, there, there is a potential that would, that would. Um, it happens to be right in the middle.
Snow storage site there?
Uh, not in snow storage, but in front of it, you know, potential. Um, like I said, because, um, property's really valuable. Housing Authority lady said so and she's not wrong, um, or, or finding a facility. The, the thing that is unique about that specific site is it's. Right, so, you know, if we do a true partnership, it's not gonna be, we're gonna spend all. But the building piece itself, you know, if it is truly a long-term partnership and the timing is right, it could be really valuable. Um, the, the range piece by itself. Um, one of the things that we really struggle with is strength. Um, you know, if the range, say that we have a dry summer and the range is closed. You know, and then we're traveling to go places and that cuts our training time in half. Um, that is not good at any level. You know, so, when we talk about the infrastructure piece of that. You know, and so it's Summerwood and the Cove and Keystone blowing up everybody's phones at night. You know, we can train at any time we want and make it night if we make it underground. So the noise issues go away, there's potential revenue source there. Um, you know, there's just a lot of different opportunities that, that can get worked out. Um, you know, and everybody, everybody in the room knows, I mean, we're very expensive. Um, doing public safety the correct way is very expensive. Um, so, so I say it's a draft, they, they. So, so I say it's a draft, the interesting thing is, uh, they also have a meeting tonight. You're gonna get all of me. Because somebody goes, well, you know, are you gonna cut yourself in half of that? You know, that's a lot of stuff that we're gonna have to work, work out and communication and, and stuff like that if, if they're interested in doing. So a lot of moving parts and pieces. Um, thanks Erica, she was so gracious. Just a lot of this stuff came together really at the end of that and we've been super busy, as everybody knows. You know, July and August, they're, they're totally meeting our expectations, so.
Are you up for this kind of growth? Would you be, I mean, is, does it, are you, would you rather stay in Dillon or is it? I mean, I know we asked you to look into it, but is it something you would choose to do or you'd rather?
Y- yes, I think if it's done the right way, absolutely. And my, like I said, I think it's a great opportunity for our organization, for the people within it to grow. You know, it is going to have to grow physically and, you know, from an officer's standpoint. Good repetitions, different, um, I don't wanna say different kind of calls, because we're already there a lot. You know, I have people that call me all the time. They see our cars in Keystone. They see them in the Cove. They see them in the Valley. Were there a lot already? And that's for free.
And that, that used to be Summit County too, like Summit County covered all that.
And it still is. They're under contract with the Sheriff's Office.
Well, to, to me, it would make sense, because you, because as Nathan says, doubling the, the force, so you'd have probably people responsible for Keystone and then people responsible for here. But, I mean, it would make sense to me that they would pay for half of it, because we'd be covering both towns. But you'd have double the people to do that, correct?
Yeah, uh, one thing I would point out too is, uh, uh, you know, from a revenue standpoint, right, they're not gonna start off paying fifty percent out of the gate. You know, how many years has it taken Dillon P D to become Dillon P D? It is gonna take some time to materialize. But there definitely needs to be a starting point of that, um, that we're comfortable with, to make sure that we can provide that level of service. But coming in fifty-fifty out of the gate, I don't think that that's a, a reality for them. We're not anticipating that, because taking on that kind of growth. You know, and I'll touch on it in my report later. We've been striving to get a certain number of people on each shift supervisor. You know, if we take this on, then there needs to be a certain number of people that are available. So it's, uh, to answer your question, yes, uh, I am up for it, uh, as long as it's done right. Uh, and it's professional and it meets, uh, the expectations of both the towns.
Would it make sense to consider a multipurpose new facility? Because I know, uh, maintenance is looking for us to invest more money in improvements up there. It might make more sense to build a new building down there by Snow Storage and make it, you know, police, police building and maintenance building. There might be some economies of scale to do that in one
Do you wanna touch on that?
Yeah, we, we've talked about that. Uh, we do feel like there's a difference there with the forest service property being adjacent, turning into workforce housing. What if the public works facility was additional workforce housing? The unique circumstance that we're in is that we already own the land out at Snow Storage, so we could do something there. Uh, but I wanted to touch on a couple of things that Kale briefly brought up. And that if we were to do this, we need to heavily invest in law enforcement. So we have a, a police sergeant, two police officers, a community service officer. There's some other requests that are outstanding out there that we've had to, to cut back because of our revenue projections. If we were to, to move forward with something like this, I think we need to look at bringing some of those things that we cut back into the fold to make this, to really give it a hundred percent our best shot, uh, from day one.
And how much of that money could we recoup from Keystone for these additional?
Well, these, these, uh, people, so the, the supervisor, the additional sergeant, the two police officers, the C S O. In the draft budget that's in front of you tonight, it would, Keystone would pay for a majority of that. Now, we're also gonna have increases to, of course, Kale. Kale's gonna have to have face time over there as long, well, and with the two sergeants that we currently have. Uh, we're gonna have to hire a support technician. We're, we're already talking about that just as our own organization. But there's a economies of scales there to, to have it shared between the two. Uh, we're even talking about a joint, uh, municipal court. Um, currently, we're with the town of Silverthorn. We're waiting to hear back from Silverthorn if they would entertain having a third party there. But I will tell you that a majority of their court cases are from our department. So does it make sense for us to create the municipal court with the town of Keystone? Increase fees, rates, everything else to help not only us, but the town of Keystone deliver the high quality of services that people want. And I think that is the biggest thing here, is that Keystone sees what we're doing here and they wanna be a part of it. We're the only organization in the county that is fully staffed. Not sure if that's public, but it needs to be. So, and if you look at that, right?
I think that's the point. I think that is the, the, the big point for Dillon, right?
Right, and, and to take it a step further, you know, the facility, we can talk about the financing and all that until we turn blue in the face, but we think that since we're the only ones really talking about doing this, there's gonna be state, federal money out there to help pay for the building.
I've been saying it for years. I think Dillon does policing better than anyone in the county. And I, and I've been saying it to Keystone. If you want good policing, you need to be talking to our chief in whatever capacity, but you need to be talking to him. And I would be, I'm all in on this. I think it would be a great opportunity for Dillon to grow and to be more visible and to give back to the community in a way that I, is, it's, you know, it's probably the number one thing I am proud of in the town of Dillon is how our, how our police police. It's right at the top for me, so I would be a hundred percent in on this if we could make it happen.
Could we put housing on top of it for police officers to use by aid money?
Well, we could look at a separate structure. I think with the, some of the requirements there, it could be a little challenging to have housing on top of some of that. But uh, it's definitely a good thought. And, and I will say too, you know, and I, I don't wanna just keep harping on this, but the budget in front of you, you know, we tried to collectively come together with like, you know, our best foot forward, right? Knowing that there's gonna have to be some give and take. But we also have to recognize that law enforcement is not cheap. The only way to do it is to do it right.
I think some of the longer-term things, like the court issues are going to evolve over time. So probably don't need to front load all that now, but I'm a hundred percent behind getting started. And as we go down that road, you know, it's gonna evolve a little bit. Uh, but yeah, a new facility is part of the plan anyway and uh, maintenance would love to pro, I mean, that would be smart to co-locate that and then you get some workforce housing out of the old building. There's a lot of interesting opportunities here and we, Keystone's gonna pick up a lot of the costs. I don't see why we wouldn't do it.
Anyone else? Great. Um, any changes we wanna see made to the I G A? Or the budget is, I mean, I don't, I don't really know.
See a multiple-year contract?
I would, I would feel better about that rather than a one-year. I would love to see a five-year commitment and and let's see if, because it's not gonna be perfect after one year. I think it's gonna be a growth and a oh, it is gonna be perfect after one year. Excuse me, I misspoke.
It'd be smart to have Mary Key kinda look at the bigger budget picture and try and work that into the bigger budget picture, a five-year plan.
We're like starting a one-year with an extension to five, because you're probably working out the bugs and stuff throughout the one year and how to work everything, so, I mean, I I'd be all in for a full commitment permanent.
When would it start? The one-year. And you'd have like a, a extra space secured by then, obviously.
Well, they have.
You already have space, okay.
Has Keystone seen these budgets and are they kind of on board in general with that kind of money? We have not. Like I said, everybody's meeting at the same time. Uh, so we have not had a, had the follow-up meeting yet of what that of, you know, clearly making sure that everybody's supportive of that, because if, if people aren't supportive of it, then why talk? You know, nobody's got any free time to waste, so. Um, really starting with that and, and then like Nathan pointed out, you know, truly going through the fine-tooth comb and, and seeing where we can get thin and and not. The unfortunate thing, there's just some stuff in our world that is not really negotiable.
I mean, that'll be the true test to see how they respond to those. So what, what's a reasonable alternative for Keystone? Just to rely.
They could stay under contract with the Sheriff's Office. Which historically in the county, you know, at one point, Blue River was under contract. Um, new, well, the Marshal's Office at that time, and then they have a, a police department in place now. You know, so that, that would be their option, or they start their own police department, you know, which we would be good partners to them as well.
If they stay contracted with the sheriff, are we still under the same obligations we have today? To be the first ones there no matter what.
Yeah, uh, you know, the closest car dispatch and, and stuff like that is. You know, a lot of it has to do with geography, which is why this really makes a lot of sense, because we're neighbors.
I, a lot of benefits if we do this right.
Um, you know, like I said in the beginning of, you know, a really true, good partnership, you know, would be beneficial for the communities. You know, not saying anything a- about the way it is now, because you know, I just think it's remarkable that they went down the road to become a town on their own, which you know, in the world of government, like what is cooler than that? In my world, the only thing cooler than that would be starting from scratch and really find out how good you are. You know, how you can attract the right people, you know, what kind of organization. Um, especially when you're starting from scratch and the smaller, um, you know, the spotlight's up. So, you know, like I said, just trying to meet expectations and, and do the right thing.
I think you have the support of this council. Can you move forward? Great.
Thank you.
Amphitheater use policy discussion?
What's that?
Sure. Um, good evening, Council and Mayor. As you remember, in July, we last left off with this topic of, for consideration. Really looking from staff to consider adopting a formal written policy for approved amphitheater uses. And at that last meeting where we left off was that council was open to opening up the amphitheater for all types of rentals, nonprofit, commercial, private rentals. Um, so what we did in the meantime, with our new town attorney's help, thank you Erica, we came back to you with the policies we'd originally presented, but adding in the ability that allows for private rentals by those commercial entities, individuals and nonprofits, and that's what's in front of you tonight.
Any changes, council, would like to see?
Um, I've, one issue that I would like, I forgot what it was in this. But um, some of those events are actual half-day events. I think we talked about it, um, being a minimum of a full-day event, if somebody had the amphitheater. Uh, for the last five years, they've been doing, you know, two events on Sundays without any problem, so I would like to see that changed to allowing half, half-day events.
Yes, I totally agree with that too. I think, um, I'd like to see half-day events to accommodate some of the nonprofits.
You know, if it's Bob Dillon and they need to set up at ten in the morning, that's a full-day event. So that would preclude a morning event, but from what I understand from people working at the amphitheater, um, they haven't had any issues with, with having evening show and have the church in there in the morning for the past five years, so I think it works. It has worked.
You have thoughts on that, Jesse? Yeah, I seem to recall you being opposed to that.
It is really different. We've heard from the folks who are renting the amphitheater for the concerts, so those that you all have designated as priority rentals, um, they do not wanna share. I would, I'll be very honest with that. The A E Gs, the Live Nations, the promoters need to be in there before the timeframe that would be allowed if someone else is also using it that day. A lot of times we have to be setting up lights or the sound system or anything that requires that goes into those huge productions much sooner than a ten AM or an eleven AM start.
So for the very big shows, I agree, but in the last five years, they've done it. They've shared it without any issues and usually the evening show didn't start setting up till one o'clock. So I think in most cases, it's worked out fine. The really big shows, yeah, they need to get started earlier.
So maybe a middle ground here is if there is, because there will be specific days available on the calendar. And if it's a private rental and those days are already blocked out for a private rental, maybe it could only be until noon, you know, eight to noon or one to five, whatever, something like that. And then, and, but they would be private rentals only, like it would be totally out of the question if there is a town event that night. And so you wouldn't be opening up the morning part of a town event, but just if there's a free day.
And I think the only reason where I would see a half-day rental being necessary is if you're planning on renting both half of the days, both halves of the day.
And that's how we've been doing it for the past five years, except for a handful of really big shows like Bob Dillon.
Did it all this year or last year?
Well, not this year.
We had anything booked. We did not allow another usage. Um, what you'll notice, or I did run some numbers. In the past, the only Sunday concerts that we're having were free shows, so that was a lot easier to do because it's a free show and we really control that. That's a town-sponsored, a town-produced event. Over the last two years though, by opening up those Sundays, by allowing those bigger names to come in on those Sundays. Um, tw- in twenty twenty-three, we had three paid shows and two free shows, which actually netted the town three hundred thousand dollars, just from those three paid Sunday shows, three hundred thousand dollars in revenue to the town. This year, by having five ticketed shows on Sundays, it's netting the town four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue. So that distinction that we're talking about.
That distinction between town shows and a paid show might be the where we decide if it's a full-day event or a half-day event. If it's a town show, it sounds like it could be a half-day event, but you could have two half-day events. If it's a paid show, it should probably be considered a full-day event. That work?
Well, I guess we need to understand what the priority two, because and this goes back to Jesse's point, is that in years past, you all wanted to make it more profitable or have more money coming in. So what we did, we went to the promoters, A G, Live Nation, some others, but those are the two big players. There's too many restrictions or obstacles, and that's when we stopped doing the paid shows, when we're having a different event there. So and that, and so like the A G Live Nation, uh, if we have an event on like a Sunday morning as an example, or even a Saturday morning or any day of the week, they're not gonna bring a show to us.
No, for paid events, it should be an all-day, you know, thing where they have priority for the event. However, it's a, if it's a free town, well, and I think half-day events on the same day.
Okay. Was that a consensus with council? Because uh, the, the concern that we have from a staffing perspective and then working with our promoter and then who they're working with is that they wanna make sure that they're, you know, the, the first ones in there and not anybody else.
Do you think we could see numbers on that, since the goal is to make the amphitheater more profitable? And sort of, can you bring us back some numbers on if we had two half-day private rentals? You know, what, what we think numbers might look like as far as staffing, if it's, you know, if we have two nonprofits in one day? Are we ultimately paying to have them there because of the fees of staffing or, and cleaning or?
I would say that Jesse just kinda outlined that just now with the amount of money that we bring in from a show.
An all-day thing, if it's a free event, though, that we're.
Yeah, I would say that's a no, I would say that's a no-brainer, but.
We've been making them half-days for five years.
So this, uh, Councilman Christianson, if you would, we'll just listen to, Councilor Tyne for one minute.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm pretty much done, but I guess I, I am here, you know, what Nathan said, it's like, we have to decide what our priorities are. I mean, that, you know, when we're, when we're opening up the, when we're opening up. I I am here, you know, what Nathan said, it's like, we have to decide what our priorities are. I mean, that, you know, when we're, when we're opening up the, when we're opening up. Here's all the days and our first priority to book those days are the paid shows, is that correct? Do we have a limited? Would we, I know that, I think there's certain nights of the week that we don't book. Paid shows, like Mondays has been traditionally one of those days.
Free shows.
Are we restricting at all the number of paid shows we're having in any given week, or are we willing to book? If we open up the calendar, are we, and we have bands that want to book every single night of. The week except for Mondays, which we're reserving for paid, for for free shows, are we doing that right now? What's our policy on that right now?
The way we've been operating in the past is to try to find a really sustainable schedule that. Both works for the staffing levels that we have, but more for the community, because what we hear from the community that y'all represent. Is that they can't tolerate paid shows every night of the week, concerts every night of the week, so. What we've found is a really good balance, or in my opinion, and what we're hearing from our community. Is a really good balance of programming almost every night at the amphitheater, but not huge programming every single night of the week. So this year, we averaged one free show on a Monday and two paid concerts every week of the summer, so. Three shows each summer. We've also had two, an average of two recreation programming at the amphitheater through each week. So we've got five nights essentially that we've programmed the amphitheater um, all throughout this summer. And then we have movie nights where we found a little bit of a lull, we were able to sprinkle in a couple of movie nights, so that would be a sixth event each of those. Nights of the, or each week of the summer. Um, so that is really the balance that we have struck to try to. Get as much revenue and as much um, business at the amphitheater as we can, but without overloading our small community.
Thank you. I have one more question. Do we designate what nights the bands that are available to bands, or does that, do the bands drive that?
It's very much driven by the bands and the promoters. A lot of it's driven on touring schedules, so if they're playing Red Rocks one night, they want to either back us up. Behind it or in front of it is really how we slot into a lot of the tours that are coming here through town. So it's very much driven by the band. We really don't have any restrictions around nights. Honestly, if we had someone that wanted to do a Monday night that we couldn't turn away, we wouldn't turn them away. We would not do a free show that night, we'd bring that paid one in. We actually chose Mondays for free shows because they were the least desirable by the paid shows. Um, but we found that that was extremely effective for our free show series, so. Yeah, it's it's all driven by the artists. Sometimes they'll give us a little bit of a range, they'll say, you know, we're available from. You know, Thursday through Saturday, what would you prefer? And then we have a little bit of. Negotiation with them to say, hey, how about this day or this day, because we've already got somebody else booked, but. Most of that is completely driven by the artists and their availability.
I know in years past, we've done um, a bunch of surveys down at the amphitheater. Can you remind me what was the most recent one?
Um, an official survey, I would say two years ago.
Okay, and did we ask a question about programming and sort of what is your tolerance for that?
I believe so. I'd have to go back.
Have that data that you could share with us, too, so we could remind ourselves what the people are sort of willing to tolerate.
And really, it's based on the number of phone calls we get, so that's what I base the feedback on, is how many complaints have we received? And my first year here, it was every day I was getting a complaint about how the amphithe- what was happening at the amphitheater. Um, this year, I think I have received two noise complaints in the entire summer so far.
So, you you know, we can do this, but. I just want to be crystal clear, we can't guarantee that every. Every day that you all choose that you want to do this, I mean, because this is not going to be a specific day. But there are going to be days that are just going to be off limits, right? So it it could be like. Week one, you have Tuesday open, week two, you have Wednesday open, and then maybe like in week six, Tuesday reappears, right? Uh, just because of what Jesse mentioned, that some of these routing and stuff, we can't control that. And if the goal, and what I'm hearing from you all, is to focus on those paid shows, then. We're going to do that.
Then we have to do it, we have to schedule or open up our open schedule around.
Yeah.
The artists.
Right, so like as an example, say, one of these. The event, you know, say typically it's a Saturday morning, right? Well, they could, they could still do that event, but it it might have to be like a Wednesday afternoon. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, it seems to me that the priority should be paid events.
Yeah.
That's what the building's built for, designed for, it's what the, you know, public expects, within reason, you know, given the folks living.
And I think the way, the way we can do the the churches and nonprofits.
Sorry, once, once again, let's let uh. Were you finished?
Yeah, yeah, I, again. And if 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 there's a free event, you know, then then great. You you slot a early morning or you have morning event in, but I think if it's a. A concert, a huge show, we'd like as many of those as we can, including on Sundays, it seems to be.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with that, and the way we could word the uh, contract for churches and nonprofits is that. You get it the Sundays you want unless we get a paid event that is going to bump that. You know, and that's what's happened in the past. I think the church had this Sunday that Bob Dylan came and they gave that Sunday back to the town. Or, you know, for the paid event.
Well, would it make sense, like if you go to paragraph four amphitheater rentals, uh. Well, section four, paragraph B, the reservation period. By May fifteenth of every year, we should be able to have. Like ninety-five percent of it. So we wouldn't necessarily run into that. But, you know, in opening, opening this all up, is this, you know, sixteen day period too long? Or should it be like a first come, first served, sort of like, think of Carolyn can relate to this with her kids. Silverthorn Rec Center um, has uh, you know, the rec programming opens at seven AM on one day, it's first come, first served. There you go.
Yeah, I think we could put in the contract also, um, that if a paid event comes available, that, you know, the. Church or nonprofit could get bumped at a later date at the town. I think that's.
I think we did talk about that at some point, like that, that these are the days available and the town has a certain amount of notice you'd have to give if something else comes up. That it's no longer available.
Yeah, I think when we did it that way, it covers our bases.
So, is that in there?
It's kind of built into the reservation period, so we felt confident that, like Nathan said, by May first, we know ninety percent of our calendar. Bob Dylan's actually a good example, though, because that did come after that May first, that one was later on, that was a May announcement. Um, so we felt comfortable that by May one, we have a good idea of what days are available. We could put that out for two weeks for people to ask us questions, to find out more information about rental processes and everything. Then on May fifteenth, we'd go live with accepting applications for those reservations. Just keep it open for about two weeks and really keeping it short because we need to be getting back to people to let them know if they've gotten those dates or not. And then on May thirty-first, we'd shut it down, and then by June fifteenth, we'd let people know who's selected, and this does. This is built around the first come, first served basis, so that's how it's written right now. If you wanted to change that, we could talk about that.
If we could back it up like two weeks, I mean, June fifteenth is late.
Right, that was.
And nonprofits for a summer schedule.
I had someone read that to me and comment that, hey, that the, that's a little bit late and you've missed some dates in June. So if you could do it May first or earlier, because when, when can you have the the paid concerts booked by? I mean, it, you could do it earlier, right?
Well, it's typically May first, but look at this year, we didn't announce one until June. I mean, we haven't, we hadn't.
And regarding Sundays, um, you know, since, how many paid concerts did you have on a, on a Sunday this year?
We had um, five concerts and one movie night and one soft opening, so seven events.
Okay, but five, that's what I want to know, five paid concerts, so like if any nonprofit or churches wanted to use it on a Sunday morning, maybe they have to start at eight AM. And hold their service or something like that, so that they could use that day to be out of there by nine or ten. That could be a solution.
Yeah, often nine and ten is not even late and not.
Well, you said eleven, but I think you said that.
Eleven always what we used to do.
Right, well, maybe we can look into that. Just an option, a solution.
And I think having that clause, you know, if we bump it back two weeks, you may have a band that books after that period. So we could add that clause that, um, you know, the church or nonprofit could be preempted by a paid show at a later date.
I think that makes sense, that any private rentals have the ability to be served by a late book show.
And I know that would work for some folks, but we're also talking about opening this up to anyone. People being able to plan their wedding, do we really want to go back to them and say, hey, we're going to bump you?
I don't think we're going to get wedding rentals for this because people are not going to book event. Hope to get a date on May first for a wedding that summer, right? Like, no, nobody.
Pavilion, so.
But I think if we did have a wedding, it might be profitable enough to keep the wedding, I don't know. I, I mean, the wedding's not going to bring in a hundred thousand dollars.
I don't know, they pay a lot of money for venues.
Well, our, our private rental fee, we just talked, it's only like, it's going to be like twenty thousand dollars.
Well, let's let our new lawyer help us figure out a way where we can have an out clause if we need it.
And I think in looking at the policy, I, I think we can mention it in the policy, but I think where we're really going to. Do most of the legal work is in the use agreements that these organizations are going to have to enter into, um, and so. I think if we're going to bump it back, we could put some kind of clause in the reservation that they are subject to. Being bumped, but I think the better place for it is going to be in the actual use agreement, where we have all of the. Contractual obligations that they have and that the city has.
So one thing I'd, I'd like, oh, sorry, go ahead. One thing I'd like to sort of pull counsel on here, I'm hearing staff saying they prefer not to do two events in one day. To rentals or to any kind of events in one day, and then I'm hearing two council members in favor of two rentals in one day, so where does everyone else stand? Two, three?
I would say that if the, you know, if our priority is paid shows and revenue. And the bands are saying they do not want, you know, they need to get in there early and they don't want to. Share the venue with any other um, group in the morning, then I would say that we, if there's a paid show. We don't have another event that day.
What about a non-paid show?
I guess, because we're running, because we're in charge of the non-paid shows, I guess I would defer to Jesse on that.
Okay, and.
I don't want to defer to Jesse on anything.
Oh, there goes, got you, Shannon.
I I would say that a paid show is is the only show on that particular day, but uh, if it's a. Free show, you know, that that, and if you can put two events in that day, I would, I would be for. Seems like it's good use of municipal space.
If you could, and so when you say if you could do it, is that sort of deferring to Jesse's judgment on whether that event allows for a second?
I I think the bias should be that you could squeeze a, a something in, you know, prior eleven AM or ten AM, I don't, I don't know the exact times. I, I would certainly defer on the exact times, but I would think the bias should be towards allowing nonprofits to use it if it's at all possible.
John, did you have something to say?
He's there.
Can he, can he come, can he chime in? I think you just said he wouldn't defer to Jesse on anything, is what I heard him say, so I don't think we need to, I'm not really that interested in hearing what else he has to say, so. Um, Councilmember Hendricks?
Well, whether it's a paid show or a free show, it's still setting up for a show, so it's not. You know, it's still going to take staff, probably even longer, because they don't have a. A crew, I don't know, it it just seems like, whether it's paid or free. Uh, it's still a production to get ready for, so I don't think it would necessarily matter if it's paid or not. If there's a show that night, there should not be anything going on in the morning. To inter- to interfere with it, to interfere with the process.
So to dig into another level of this, there's other events, like a recreation event, like if there's yoga scheduled for the evening, then would we be open to a private rental in the morning?
I would say yes to that, because um, that's not a production that needs to be. I don't know what goes into doing it, to setting up for yoga, but I'm guessing it's not the same as setting up for concert.
So maybe that is the middle ground, that we'd be more open to two events if it's something light use. Or it doesn't require setup like a mute, like a concert would. If it's like yoga at the amphitheater or, you know, watercolors at the amphitheater, that maybe a private rental in the morning would be acceptable. And maybe you could bring us back something that would kind of outline what that might look like?
Yeah, and I'm just thinking through all the different staff needs, because we have that, you know, big document that you all looked at last time of. The different types of staff that'll be required for different types of events, so if it's a very staff-heavy half day rental. And it's also very staff-heavy, like even though we talk about yoga as being light duty, we still need. Five staff members to pull off a yoga night at the amphitheater, so. You do, running into issues where we just don't have enough staff, I think would be. A concern of mine, because we can't necessarily anticipate what types of half day rentals will be asked to.
Jesse, is John muted on our end or his end?
That's on his end.
His end, okay.
I don't do yoga. You know, but I think I know what what you, we need five staff members to be at a, at a yoga event.
Most of the time, yes, because we do a sound system, so we're setting up a sound system specifically for them. Um, so we have a sound engineer or a house tech, we don't bring in a full blown sound engineer, but one of our back of house folks is there. To run the sound system, um, depending on if it's just the yoga instructor, lots of times they also have a sound. What do you call it, a sound healer, or, you know, I don't know what the exact term is, but. They might have two people, so we'll have two people dedicated to each person that is on a microphone, so we can make sure to monitor those. We have one to two staff up top registering people, because we've taken pre-registration, so we're checking people in, we're signing people in. And then because it's a private event and it's a closed event, it's for purchase, we have to have people manning all of our gates. So we're not able to just lock a gate and keep people out, so we actually have to have staff to monitor what's happening inside. While we have staff up top taking registrations and while we have staff back of house setting up the sound and running the sound, so. Because, because we're such an open park.
I hate to get into the weeds and stuff like that, but could we dictate that you can't use the sound system? I see yoga out on the, you know, lawn in front of one of the condos, et cetera, you know. It doesn't seem like it's an appropriate use for a million dollar sound system for.
And they don't use the big sound system, that's why we have to have someone there to set up the little one, so we have a s- a different sound system that we use specifically for yoga.
But a lot of the yoga teachers have their own sound systems.
I, I kind of agree with Oliver, I mean, is that the best use of the amphitheater, um, to have yoga there when you can do it out on the grass by the lake?
Well, I, I don't, I don't think it's bad at all to do yoga in the amphitheater, it just seems like it's a little bit overkill to have five town staffers. There for a yoga, you know, yoga event, that just seems a little bit, you know, too much.
Well, in the church, when they have services, only have the sound mixing guy, one guy from the town.
Those aren't paid events, so again, like to Jess, what Jesse said, which you have to make sure anyone who's entering is paying the same as everyone else, so. You know, just by doors alone, that's four people or five people, just, just have one person at each entrance to the amphitheater.
In the event that's happening at the amphitheater. The staff is, the more staff there, the better taken care of the amphitheater is going to be. So I would not, I'm not going to argue with our town staff as to what their needs are.
So let's explore the days that are available or a light use day, if there's an availability for a half day rental option, what that might look like. And then we'll look at that again.
And then just so that I know how to work with Erica on this one, are we talking about actually stacking rentals on top of each other, too? Are you open to having two private rentals on the same day, or are we saying just one rental per day and a town event?
I think it's, well, I don't, actually, I, I was thinking about that earlier and I'm glad you reminded me. I worry about two rentals, because if someone's having a great birthday party for a kid in the morning. And people aren't out of there right by noon, you're going to all of a sudden be hurting people up and kicking them out. So that the one o'clock rental or whatever it is can, can come in, and that might get ugly and put staff in a situation they may not want to be in.
Well, I kind of disagree, I, I think if it's going to be like a town sponsored event or. Parties or things like that, I think you, I think I'm for scheduling two events, I think. The paid concerts, as Oliver has said, and Dana, that no, I mean, we need to to just, this, that's, that's the prior, priority. We've got this million dollar amphitheater, we want to generate revenue, so I think I'm more on yes.
But so responding to the question Jesse asked, which was two private rentals back to back. And so those people are going to want to set up and you're going to have to kick the first people out at some point, so the next. And so those people are gonna want to set up and you're gonna have to kick the first people out at some point. So the next group can, so the bathrooms can get cleaned and the next group can set up. So, so I don't know if it does make sense.
Well, and like as an example, since this was brought up earlier, what if on Sunday you have one denomination in the morning, on the afternoons, a different denomination? Is that gonna upset either group?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Churches have, you know, offered to work together in the past to do joint services. So I don't think that's gonna be.
I mean, I think, listen, if this is a, a rental facility and, you know, private renter X has eight until noon, you know, staff should say, noon, you're out. I mean, you know, it's just like any rental facility.
Correct.
Ski lifts close at three thirty or four. Yeah, so I, I wouldn't worry about that because that, you know, this is a commercial enterprise that the town of Dillon is running.
Part of the, the contract.
Well, it's not. It, I mean, I know that's what we're looking at it right now, but I would prefer before we fully commit to that, that we also engage with the public on it a little bit because that is not what we promised them when we said, can we have ten million dollars to improve your facility? We promised free Friday and Saturday shows, permanent. We're not changing that. And we said that and we made that promise.
Free Friday shows, though.
Well, because we've adjusted that. And so we've adjusted the commitment to, we still want to do a free programming. But sort of part of that free programming and part of, and I've said this before, but part of why we didn't do a fence in the first place is we didn't want anyone to feel closed off. And I think by making it a fully rentable facility at all times that you can't go into unless you've paid to play is not what we told the people we were building. And I think that would, that would not be true to what we asked to do. And I, if we do that, which I'm not saying I'm not open to that, I do think we should need to have public engagement before we, before we say we are fully commoditizing this or whatever, making this a full rental in the morning or the night, and nobody can use it unless you rent it and, and, or it's a show.
I suspect in most cases, those events are gonna be graduations, a church service.
Those aren't rentals. So those are already in with the town, right? Like the graduations.
I'm not sure how many private parties and events we're gonna have. I mean, really.
It's hard to know until we actually.
Well, that's it.
I mean, like, we're talking all this theoretical stuff.
Yeah, exactly. This is very hypothetical.
We don't really know what we're gonna get.
I will be surprised.
Shouldn't.
Yeah.
Get too deep into this discussion.
Right.
Um, and, and also, but not open it way too much, you know, we.
And we can make course corrections. We can make course corrections downstream if we need to. If the demand is that severe where we have those issues, but.
Well, so maybe that's an argument for one a day. And if the demand is that severe, then we talk about, do we tolerate two a day?
Well, we've been doing two a day for the, most of the past five years. So I think if it's a town event, we control that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I still like the idea of paid concerts, you know, because they're generating revenue. There's one event that day, but the other nonprofits and other people that want to use it are town-sponsored events. There should be able to be two, like, like Oliver said, eight to twelve, cut it off, one to five, whatever.
Yeah, that's part of the contract. You gotta be out by a certain time.
Well, here's a suggestion. We, like Carolyn said, we, um, we kind of go into it with the mind that we're gonna just do one event a day. We open up the reservations per this use, per this um, draft agreement on May first, because by May first, we'll know the paid concert, pretty much the schedule. We'll know the availability, the, the available dates, and we'll see what we get. And then we can adjust, because then, let's say, we, you know, we get what we get. Now, are we saying you have to apply during that time only? May fifteenth, you have to have your application if you want to rent it for this summer.
Yeah, we have the last minute.
So we see what we get, and then maybe we can say, like we often do with shows, hey, we, we're, we're offering another night, you know, because um, we can say, hey, you know what? We told, you know, we, we actually can fit in these two events on this one day. But until we get, until we know what the demand is, we, we.
And know what the events are.
Oh, we're talking, you know, it's all theoretical.
Yeah, we're not gonna figure out all the possibilities.
Did you make a note that a move of reservations to make first, like as early as you can?
Is that what all the council wants to do, is open the reservations earlier?
Or, or shorten it, you know, that the application period is
It could be a one.
Two days, one day or two days, like at the amph, or like at the rec center, like Nathan said, it's first come, first served. You're making decisions as you see them.
I think you need to let the people know by June first, if it's churches or nonprofits, probably.
And then as long as people know that you could cancel it, if, if a paid show or a different opportunity.
Because May fifteenth is a little late.
Well, we might not have to do that, because back to what Madam Mayor said, if we use the Silverthorn model with the rec center, they would know that the day that the registrations become available, what's available, and they could confirm that they have it.
On the fifteenth.
Right. But the problem is, and this is the issue that at least I don't, I don't want to speak for all staff, but I don't want to be in there like trying to manipulate whatever is coming in or like, you know, vouching for one entity over the other. So I think the only way to do it is, here's one registration block. Whoever gets it, gets it, and we just have to live with it. Because I don't want to pick one group over another.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Or, you know, we're just gonna have, this whole room's gonna be filled with people and.
But there is gonna have to be some pick, because there's gonna have to be some vetting of, no.
No, I would say no vetting. Just open it. First come, first served.
I thought we said we are not allowing, like, political groups and.
No, we're opening it up to everybody.
If we're opening it up.
For those, for legal reasons.
Well, and we, I mean, we don't want to get into a potential lawsuit of like choosing political party A over political party B, right? I don't want to be a part of that.
Yeah, I don't either. I don't think you do either.
I don't. And in fact, let me state for the record, I think, I think private rentals, I think private rentals at the amphitheater are out of place, and I would not be in favor of voting for this, so. I'm gonna vote against doing any kind of private rentals at the amphitheater because I don't think that's what we told the people we would be doing.
Well, we've already voted.
Until we engage with them, and we haven't approved this policy, until we engage with them and ask if this is okay with the town of Dillon, I'm not in favor of renting out the amphitheater for any sort of private use. Period. Anyone else have thoughts on the amphitheater use policy, which we are building before we adopt?
Well, right, but we've already agreed that we were gonna open it up to everyone at a previous council meeting.
Well, we agreed to it, but we didn't vote on it, and I'm not in favor of it. So that's where I stand, and I'm sharing that with you.
I appreciate that.
So I'm not gonna vote in favor of it, no matter what it looks like. I think it's the incorrect use for the amphitheater. Any other thoughts on the amphitheater use policy and changes you want to see come back?
That's it for today.
Hearing none, the next agenda item is the 2025 Budget General Fund Discussion.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're gonna review the draft 2025 General Fund. And I'll just go over the timeframe of this with you. Um, we're gonna present the first full draft on October eighth, and then we will have a public hearing on November twelfth, and we will have final adoption on November nineteenth. And this, remember, this is a draft general fund budget, so we are continuing to look at this and look at new, um, you know, inputs and estimates. So this is a work in progress. Um, so, um, to highlight some of the um revenue changes, uh, the 2025 budgeted revenues are ahead of 24 budget by fifteen percent um, or two point seven for total revenue. And the increase is primarily because we budgeted 2024 very conservatively for sales tax. And we also combined the Marina Fund into the General Fund this year, for this budget year. Um, so Marina revenue is now added in here. Um, we also have an increase in concert ticket proceeds and facility fees. And we've also added the Keystone reimbursement of public safety expenses in here, which is a direct flow-through. So revenues equal expenses. It does not affect the bottom line. And the remaining revenues are projected to be essentially flat to 24 budget. So sales tax and events revenues are the largest contributors, contributors to the general fund. Um, funding with six point three six million in sales tax and eight point two four nine million in total events revenue. And as you all know, the town collects ticket sales from concertgoers and pays the promoter uh, less the um, town's ticketing fee. So that net impact to the budget is zero, except for ticketing fees, which um, we retain. Uh, the Marina revenues have added two point five to the general fund, um, but revenue budget of which boat rentals is one point one two million, and Marina revenues offset by Marina operating expenses of two point one four million. And we have transfers out of the Marina for the capital budget of three hundred and thirty-six thousand and two hundred and six thousand for Marina debt. Some expenditure highlights for the general fund, um, twenty-four is ahead of, twenty-five is ahead of budget by nineteen point three percent or three point four one million. Um, some of the expenditure changes for twenty-five, we have four point, well, this, we did this last year as well for twenty-four. We have a four percent salary increase across the board. And we have done pay scale adjustments, uh, which will be effective as of January first, twenty-five. Uh, staffing change, we are proposing to add a short-term rental coordinator position as a part-time position initially twenty to thirty hours a week to focus on enforcement. And we think that this position could offset the cost, uh, based on the revenue that it could bring in by additional enforcement for short-term licenses and sales tax, um, filing. And we also have budgeted, as we do standardly, uh, health insurance increase at ten percent. We're actually gonna get the actual increase on Thursday. That could be more or less. We don't know what that's gonna be yet, but we plugged in ten percent at this point. And we've also plugged in workers' comp increase of ten percent and utilities, uh, at five percent, which we do standardly. Uh, some new, uh, some changes for this, um, this year, as, as I mentioned, um, Marina revenues and expenditures are now presented in the general fund budget, so we've combined them. They're not, it is not its own fund any longer. And also, as Nathan and Kale presented before, um, the town of Kees, Keystone Public Safety Services uh, for the IGA, those revenues and expenses are also in here. So, um, to point out payroll and benefit costs represent about thirty-eight percent of the general fund expenditures. We're a service-oriented entity. Uh, the remainder of the costs are associated with all town operations, legal, donations, IGAs, et cetera. Um, so if we, um, if we remove the expenditures for town concerts and Keystone Public Safety, payroll and benefits are actually over half. They're fifty-six point two five percent of the expenditures. And so now I'll just run through, um, some highlights of the di, the different departments in the general fund. Um, administration, uh, we have budgeted at two point seven four million, up ten percent or two hundred and thirty-three thousand from twenty-four. And I, I, the administration includes council, elections, licensing, et cetera, that's in your packet. Planning and engineering are actually down slightly, uh, forty-one thousand, and that's of all costs, costs associated with planning and engineering. Um, and the reject, reduction is a result of over-budgeting the new planner, planner position. Events, uh, twenty-five expenditures are budgeted at eight point six nine, uh, million, up twenty point five percent or one and a half million. And events and rec, uh, events covers operational costs for uh, cleanup day, Memorial Day, farmer's market, town concerts, winter events, holiday lighting, and increases for twenty-five are due to payroll raises and increases in concert ticket sales that are paid directly to the promoter at the amount of one point one million. Uh, police, public safety, uh, twenty-five expend, twenty twenty-five expenditures are budgeted at three point nine million, up sixty-two point six five percent, of which the majority of that increase is the Keystone um, expenditure, which is the, the flow-through. So we're collecting what we're actually paying out.
Sorry, I think you might have a typo there under the patrol line of the 2024 estimate. It says it's eighty-six thousand dollars.
I would look at that. Thank you. Yes, that does look like a, it needs to be updated. Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Um, so as we discussed, the town of Dillon is considering an IGA. You've just, we've just discussed that. And, um, that will be, either we will be covering a portion of those expenses, or it's gonna be a complete flow-through. And the full expenses associated with Keystone will be covered by a Keystone reimbursement. Um, marketing and communication, twenty-five expenditures are projected to go up three point two one percent or twelve thousand for a total budget of three hundred and eighty-five thousand. And those increases are for pay raises and website hosting. Um, Public Works, uh, we expenditures are budget, budgeted to be down, and buildings and parks are budgeted to be up. We did some, um, overhead reallocations between Public Works and Buildings and Parks. So you'll see, like, it's a net effect of zero because we reallocated some overhead lines. Um, and we did have some, uh, payroll raises and utility increases that apply to those departments as well. Recreation, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-five expenditures are budgeted at four hundred and fifty-one thousand or, um, forty-one up, up, up ten point one two percent or forty-one thousand. And that recreation includes operations for all summer and winter rec and recreational event activities such as disco, yoga, the rec leagues, lake loops, um, and that increases due to under-budgeting overhead in twenty-four and some pay increases as well. And Marina expenditures are budgeted at two point one million, up six point seven three percent. And um, as I mentioned, we've now combined this into the general fund. And the expenditures primarily include full-time and seasonal staff. Um, there's concessions, retail, um, parts and fuel cost of goods sold, dock, facility and grounds maintenance, and Denver water lease payments. Um, the general fund is budgeted to transfer out about two hundred and six thousand to the capital fund for Marina debt, as I mentioned before. And the operating results of four hundred and forty-two thousand are projected to be in twenty-five. However, you know, the debt, with debt and capital expenditures, the net loss will be about a hundred thousand. So as for, uh, reserves and cash, we maintain three months of operating expenditures and our reserves, which is three point four million. And revenues are currently covering expenditures by two hundred and eight thousand. That could change as we get updates to revenue and expenses as we work through this draft. Uh, we still maintain, hmm, excuse me. We still maintain one hundred and seventy thousand in reserves for health insurance. And due to, if we have an increase that is like unpalatable, that we can't absorb. And then cash available after reserves at the end of twenty-five is projected to be about eight hundred and fifty-one thousand. So this, it, you know, we, our budget is flat, as Nathan was saying. And, um, this is a work in progress. So we're still, you know, gathering information, and I'm certainly open to any questions or comments that any of you have.
Sorry, Mary Kay, can we go back to the Marina expenditures? I wonder why it's sort of projected personnel and general Marina operations are gonna, are expected to be less than the 2024 estimate?
The general Marina operations?
And the personnel. They both, they both look like they're, they're.
Twenty-four estimates are higher than budget? Personnel?
Yeah, right. So if, so I'm talking about the estimates. So what we're actually spending this year. Um, shouldn't we be budgeting to spend actually that much next year? Or do we have some reason that it was a lot higher than expected this year?
Well, I'm, I'm still working through that with the Marina to get a better understanding of seasonal staffing levels and, um, so we, this is our estimate as, as of it stands right now. Um, and it's relatively flat. We're budgeting twenty-five to be relatively flat from twenty-four estimate.
Okay. And then my, I had another question. When you were talking about, um, public safety, you said that the patrol, that two point nine, that's anticipating, yes, adding Keystone, that they are going to accept the contract and that's what that number is, or?
Let me see.
I think she said she just put it in the budget. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. You said you did, you, you, it's anticipating that, yes.
It's a flow-through, so it's a net.
Because they're paying for it. Okay.
Correct. We're not assuming that they're not covering the full cost at this point.
It would, I should have asked you this last week. It would have been helpful for me to have a balance sheet, just like the one page where you like see the totals right all on one page instead of having to go back to revenue and then look at expenditures.
Okay.
And without the line items, just the totals, kind of.
Just the total.
Just the balance sheet, the regular, yeah, the summary balance sheet. Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, I like this too, and I would like this also, but then you, like the last page or the first page or whatever it is.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Just to kind of eyeball, and then, you know, because usually that's when I, you can really look at the percentages a little easier, for me, anyway, to not have flipping back and forth.
No, thank you for mentioning that. And then we did receive the, um, July, June and July sales tax figures and July is currently head, ahead of, um, 23 by 2,000.18%. And year-to-date sales tax is now down 2.84% or 163K, so we're closing that gap of what we're down, but it's not enough to move the needle to re-project revenue. Fire. Any further comments or questions? We'll be presenting budgets for the next couple of work sessions, so, and pulling it together, um, in a few weeks, you know, the full budget. So we'll have an opportunity to look at this again and, um.
Would you, um, in the, um, second line on the very first page, specific ownership, can you tell me what that is?
That's, um, DMV registration.
Oh, yeah, for a car? Like when you register your car, Dylan actually gets some of that money? No kidding?
Yes, they do. Yeah, one, one of the ones that I was, I was looking at severance tax, that was an interesting one that I had to, some mineral rights, so.
Mineral rights?
Yes, and I'm, I'm going to dig into some history of that further. Scott, do you have any information on that by chance? Never got that.
So like a uranium mine?
That's how we guess.
Any questions for Mary Kay? Great, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Up next, item five, discussion of adopting a resolution to support or oppose the ballot measures. Let's start with the easier one. Um, the, uh, adjusting the charter to align with the state one, that seems like an easy one to write a resolution that says we support this and it puts us in line with the state and we think this is, would make our town clerk's job a lot easier. Does, does anyone have a different read on that? Off on that? So that's an easy one. Anybody have any thoughts on um, putting something out? I certainly do, but I'm happy to wait to share them, putting something out for the other question that's on the, on the ballot.
Putting something out, well, can you explain? I'm not sure what you're saying.
Yeah, sure. Uh, Jeff Wilson sent us an email saying that, um, there were some inquiries about what the town could do to, um, clarify or whatever, put information out about the election. Um, and then he wrote that we could adopt a resolution that says the town council either supports or opposes these ballot measures.
I think that's a good idea and I, I would support that ballot measure. I think the majority of council did the first time. And that, my view hasn't changed at all.
Right, so I don't, so here's, I, I think that we're going to hear that from everyone generally, is, does anyone not, has anyone changed their opinion or is this a, it's a 5-2 still?
Well, I, I mean, I think, I think we all should comment on it because I think it's important. I think, you know, my comment is I think we should have a resolution because he came to us, I mean, the pork, the, the best Western development came a year and a half ago and then it was approved by planning and zoning. And then it got approved by town council and I'm still in favor of it and so I would like the public to know that we do have a resolution and we should vote on it.
And our majority view has not changed, I think, so.
Yeah, I, I think we're not pulling the wool over anyone's eyes is what I'm trying to say. Is that everybody in this room knows that this is going to be a 5-2, right? Because
Well, let's, let's just do it.
Sure, we, we could do it that way, but here's what I'm saying, it's a 5-2.
Maybe.
They all know it, we all know it, everybody in Dylan knows it. And so putting this, putting a resolution out and, and maybe there's room for, maybe there is room for adjustment on that. However, putting it out there divided for me would deepen the fissure that's already being created in the council and probably amongst the council and the people of Dylan and, and you're not, we're not going to be tricking them, right? They are going to know exactly who voted for it without even looking at it. They're going to know who's in favor of it and who's not. And so for, for me, there's no point in doing this. It doesn't carry any water because everybody knows what five people think and what two people think and what most of the people in town or what 205 people in town thinks.
So here's where I disagree. If, if the wording of the resolution explains why we still support it, I think you can add some information to that. So I would recommend that we do a resolution in favor of it. You know, kind of highlighting that the town had worked with Mr. Port for over a year to come up with something uh, that would match up with the town, uh, core master plan, which Ned has said that it does. And so I think we need to throw a little more meat on the bone that this wasn't a willy-nilly process. This was, you know, a year of hard work to try and get something that would, uh, support the Town of Dylan master plan. And it is consistent with that and, um, you know, we still support it for all those reasons. So I think you, if you word it properly, you're going to add some information and value to it. It's not just a revote. We can, we could take a vote if you want to see who wants to do a reservation.
It is a work session, so we're not going to take a vote, but everyone's welcome to share their thoughts on this. We've heard from councilmen more than councilmen.
All agree, the majority of us agree, then it'll be, it'll come back as the next council meeting first to vote on.
Totally, and I totally get it. And what I'm anticipating with my crystal ball is that would come down to likely a divided vote. And I think everyone in Dylan would see right through it. And so it just, I mean, do it, do it if you want and that's fine and I'm not going to stand in your way with my single vote, I can't do that. But to me, you're not fooling anyone. Everybody who's in favor of it already knows they're in favor of it. Everyone in town who's against it already knows they're against it. And I don't think a resolution by this council is going to change anyone's vote. So I wouldn't be in favor of do, putting one out for that, but by all means, let's hear what councilmen, Lock, Tyne and Hendricks have to say.
I, I would say I, I what concerns me the most is factual information that tells all Dylan voters, a yes vote means this and a no mo, no vote means that. I, I think there's some confusion.
And I think we're doing a blue book for that. The blue book, which explains what your votes
The voter guide that goes out with the ballot.
Right, okay, so that
Who writes the
The petitioners and staff and the town clerk.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to see what that says.
But who wrote it?
So people for the, um, ballot did and the people against the ballot wrote it, so they, each side wrote it.
Who's the people for that wrote it?
The developer.
That the developer. And then against were the, um, people who, um, put the referendum petition forward. And then for the second question, it was our election attorney, Jeff Wilson.
So I, I still think, nonetheless, blue book, I'm not, you know, I, I would hesitate to say that every voter is going to read the blue book. Maybe some will, who knows? But I, I, I do think there is some confusion in this community about what a no vote means and what a yes vote. And I'm not sure our job is to, you know, push a voter to change his or her mind. But it, to me, it's about factual information. A no vote means this, this is, this would be the upshot if you go that, the yes vote means this. And I, I think that is an appropriate position for the council to, to take. Yeah, if, if, as you say, everybody knows already what, what, what
Do you mean sort of like something along the lines of, you know, we stand by what you will read in the blue book as far as facts or?
Well, I, I, I haven't read the blue book, so I don't know if there's facts in the blue book. My gut tells me there's a little bit of, you know, lobbying in the blue book for both sides, which is understandable.
So you'd be in favor of something totally neutral with only facts?
Yes.
And, and so that's not really taking a position.
My concern is simply this, I'm, I'm not, you know, when you go in, you know, people think a no vote means that this project will not take place. That the sale of the property won't, you know, won't happen, et cetera, yada, yada, yada. That's what they think. And that's very reasonable to think that because it's a, you know, no, right? You, and, and, and in the language that we all speak, right, no means no, this, so I think there's some confusion. And I, I just want voters to understand what the upshot of a no vote is, what the upshot of a yes vote. That, that's, that's my, boom, yeah, and I would, I would probably look to our new attorney. Congratulations, welcome, uh, you know, to, to, uh, draft something that's very factual in terms of what, what, what the, you know, what the upshot is.
I agree with Oliver, I think it's not clear to some people that something big is going to get built there either way, no matter how they vote. It's either A, the branded residence, or it's B, 240 condos, more units, two blocks of view.
Maybe, I don't know why you're so certain of that because
That's
What he said, if, if we're willing to take him at his word.
I think we should take him at his
Well, you think that, so, so that's what I'm trying to say is you think we should do that and, but not necessarily everyone in town may be willing to
This, this is where the misunderstandings come into play is that, um, I think it might be some wishful thinking or a little bit of uncertainty.
Maybe on both
People are hoping that this thing does go away and it's not. It like, it's, it's not.
Well, you, I mean, I, you know.
And I would like to see the resolution say something like that because I think that's where the confusion has arisen from.
I'm not sure that's a fact, so if we're talking about putting out something that is totally fact, you know, we don't know it's a fact that that would happen unless we have an application that it's happening. You know? Well, I think, so I don't think we should be, that would be to me, that's speculation. And I get it that it's maybe on, on your hunch or whoever's word you're taking, but, you know, it's not a fact. That's not a fact.
It's, it's a pretty
It's what it is, we all know exactly where the information came from.
We could get hit by a comet tomorrow and the world might explode, but as, as far as we can predict on the way forward, it's a fact.
Maybe, maybe not. I, I don't think, to me, there's some doubt there and so for me, that's not a fact. Because there is not, you know, we haven't seen any proof of it, so if, you know, it's a fact in someone's mind, but there is no proof of it. And so if we're trying to put out something that is truly factual, I don't think that can be it. It has to be something that is truly facts. For instance, we had, you know, so, you know, some true facts.
The resolution and the contents of the resolution will be decided by a vote, I think.
Of the council?
Yeah.
Right, okay, so right, so that gets us back to my first point. Five people think one thing, two people think another, and so we can put out whatever facts we want, but I don't think we're going to be fooling anyone.
But, but again, it's like, it's a formal re- vote of a resolution on the two ballots. On September 10th and we, we're this council, we're going to vote and then maybe we put in, it's a vote of yes. And then, you know, if, if you don't want to vote for it, then you don't have to vote for it, but I think, I think it should, I do still think that we should put that up.
I think we can add some value by trying to help clarify some of the mis, in my perception, misunderstandings. And I think Oliver shares my opinion on that.
Councilor Tyne, Councilmember Hendricks?
I, I would be open to a resolution. I'm just wondering, because I think I read something from Chef about like drafting the resolution and the wheresses. Who would write those?
We are supposed to come up with them.
As a council?
Yes.
Together?
Yes.
I have a feeling we would have difficulty doing that.
That's exactly what I think.
But on the other hand, I do agree that there's a lot of misinformation out there and I think it would be, you know, it would be nice to have the opportunity to clear up some of the misconceptions. Um, and also, you know, just, I'm, just in looking at the information on the blue book, just the first word I'm reading is the project is not a good fit for Dylan. Well, in his opinion is that, that's not a fact, I would say, um, so.
Well, it's an argument against, that's what you're reading.
Right, so, um, I guess I would be open to the opportunity to to draft a resolution if we can, if we can do that as a council. I, I think we could come up with a list of
Well, Jeff said, we, I mean, attorney said, he emailed me back because he said, yes, we could, we, we would, typically it would be a lot earlier than this, but we're kind of should have done it earlier, but if we do, if we do it next week, then
The next question is how would we go about doing that to get it on the agenda? Next, I guess that's
So what we would be able to do is send everyone on council a template of a resolution where you guys can fill in the whereas clauses. Um, and then if that's submitted to to Adrian within the packet deadline, which I believe is Thursday, Thursday at noon next week, then it could be on the agenda.
How would we come to a consensus about what's in the resolution?
I think you guys would all have to work together or at least have to the mayor's point, enough, a majority, um, resolution put together, um, as to why the, the council's position is what it is.
Well, for example, Have that list in the meeting and have it on the actual meeting agenda and have the list and say we're going to work it during the discussion and cross out which ones we feel are not fact and circle the ones that we think we all agree are fact. And then adopt a resolution with points 1, 7, 11 and 12.
So we would have that discussion at our next work session and then at the next meeting, we would have
I think we can do it at the meeting.
We could do it.
I think we could do it at the meeting if it were well organized.
Well, that's what we do, we do it.
Right?
We, we just have to have that list.
And then strike them out.
Says the petition signers seek to repeal this hasty plan in a way to fully completed plan, crafted, crafted with public input. I've never heard that as an option.
If you're only, if you're only looking at the against, I mean, like
They want to plan and embrace
There's an entire list of reasons to vote yes for it too. So if you're only opposed to the no vote, then I don't think this
I think this information is misleading.
That
Tells voters that there may be another
Arguments for, it's right before arguments against and there's a whole list of them. If, there's four points on both of them.
Well, it's incumbent upon us to make sure everybody is very clear on what they're voting for and I'm not sure this is going to do it.
To answer your first question on how procedurally you would do it, if council wants to, they can amend the resolution, so there would be a motion to either approve or deny the motion. If the motion is to approve, but there are amendments to the resolution, then someone would make a motion to amend the resolution, those would go to a vote and then you have to then vote on passing the resolution. So you could do it that way, um, and then it would just be a question of the final version being published.
Yeah, the ballots are in the mail, so if we don't get it done at the next meeting, it's irrelevant.
That's also correct.
Yeah.
So that's what we need to do.
Okay, so can you send something else, us, out to us that we can have a discussion during the next meeting? Or we'll get our, I don't know, everyone submits what they believe are the facts that the people need to see to Adrian by 4th of Thursday.
And then do we vote on
By Wednesday?
Include it in it, or what we don't want?
Or you send us a template? And then we'll have, we'll do, we're going to work session it during the meeting. And then we'll, we will consider, we'll consider approval of the resolution, amending it to include point, bullet points, one, two, whatever. You know, have it laid out in bullet points so we can easily strike them, maybe.
And again, I'll send you a template, but as far as the whereas clauses that have to be drafted, those get sent in and then
Yes.
And, and how do we decide what we're including and not in the work session?
We're going to do it, we're going to work session it in the meeting.
And disagreements, we can't vote?
Well, hopefully we come up with something. I think the idea here and the idea that everyone should have in mind moving forward with this is we come up with something that is fact-based, that we can all agree on and that if we can all seven adopt it and put it forward, it might be worthwhile. But I think something pushed forward by those who want this, who are in the for crowd. Some, I think pushing something forward just by the people who are for it with the facts that those people agree upon is not doing any sort of service to the community.
Who's creating the signs that are in everyone's yards? Yes or no signs?
I don't know. Well, I assume Sean Budson and someone else.
Well, I thought in the past that that attorney's Well, I thought in the past that attorneys could come up with a temporary resolution and then we could edit it. Yes.
So I think that the issue with this is um under the FCPA.
Misleading.
It would be state action or state money used for the purposes of the election. And so there, you run into issues with that. So that's why we can provide you with the template. But the work product itself cannot come from the attorneys.
So would we submit our suggested language to you?
It would go to Adrian so that it can be put in the packet so that everyone has access to it. I mean, I, I think ideally for Adrian's sanity and for your sanity, if you guys can come up with language or even a, you know, a couple of you or a group of you come up with language that you all agree with, that way we're not Frankensteining a, a resolution together. That's obviously ideal.
Outside of a public meeting.
That's also true.
Right, two people can.
That could be great to have a, a meeting about a resolution that publicly argue that true and false parts of it all. That'd be fun.
I think it is going to be fun. Okay, everyone clear? There's mud.
And just to be clear, I'll send out two templates, um one for each election.
Perfect, one for and one against. Oh, one for each.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Everyone on board with that? Staff reports. Scott, did you want to give us a highlight from your couple of weeks?
Just a couple of quick updates. We're getting ready to start concrete repairs in different locations around town. You may have seen areas that have been colored in pink and so those are our remove and replace. So we're going to have a bit of a, um, we tried to wait till after Labor Day, so the crowds were smaller because we're going to have kind of a, a bit of a cone city um out there when we get started on that. We're also going to be starting our rec path uh maintenance repairs. Uh we missed our spring opportunity. We have a section of path that we're, path that we're going to remove and replace sort of out by the nature preserve, just down from the nature preserve parking area, but uh unfortunately, everything was too wet this spring for us to um to do that project and, and have it not fail. So we've let the area dry out. We're going to go ahead and we're going to do that uh probably starting next week. And then that will be followed with uh crack repair along the, the whole pathway system. Um, we're also going to, the, our engineer and Evan and I are going to take a tour of our rec paths. I know there's a lot of concern about the, the roughness of the path from, select from the Eagle statue um out towards the Summerwood border, so we're going to look and see what our options are in terms of whether we want to do an overlay or some sort of a a micro surface treatment or a sand seal or something like that.
Do we know that section coming down towards the, what you call it, the nature preserve where you walk out to the Moffett Tunnel? That hill that comes down before that path? Cause that, those joints are really rough and you're going quickly during down there.
That's the area that's going to be cut out and repaved.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's dangerous, right? Okay, good.
Other questions for me? Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. And the police chief's report, Kale?
Major update? No comment on the post office investigation. I know everybody's uh on the edge of their seats of that. We're still working really closely with postal service on that one. As that progresses, just our staff is, you know, anytime July comes rolling around, July, August, um, the numbers were big this year. We've been super busy. Um, our staff has been outstanding. Everybody's healthy. Uh Michael Cotts is in her third week. Uh, FTO program, she's going to be a great addition. Can't wait to get her in front of you. There's almost, I can't, uh, the number is six? Is it six left? Five left. Um, I look at Jesse that because um her and her staff have done such a great job this year of balancing out how many acts we have, big, small, diverse. Um, they've done a really good job because that impacts everybody. Um, our staff uh is pretty toughs uh with everything else that's going on, concerts. You know, coming into fall. The, the reason I bring that up is um Dylan's not getting any less busy. Um, there's some unique just some unique issues that we see coming in the future of, you know, development, non-development. Infrastructure improvements. Uh I will tell you that from what Scott was, Scott and Dan are talking about, there will be traffic delays on Highway six. Um, but what a great finished product. You know, get people where they need to go so they can move. Um, you know, there's just been tragedy after tragedy after tragedy in the country. Cyclists, pedestrians. You know, obviously we're thinking about the trooper that got ambushed down in the metro. Um, there's just a lot going on. Um, positive message. Um, our staff is, has really done great things in the last couple of months that um, every day I get reminded of why I'm here. Um, and it usually comes from them or somebody that I talk to outside. Not doing anything. You know, walking around, looking at stuff, being at concerts. Um, pretty remarkable group downstairs. So I'd like to point that out. Uh, busy at the post office. When we can release stuff, we will. Um, more to come on that. Detective Bryce has been the lead investigator and he's just done an outstanding job. Um, clearly, when you look at the payroll ledger, people have been at work a lot and it shows. Um, red eyes, um, late nights, um, and great partnership. The Rangers have been here all summer long. Scott pointed out the other night. Um, great partners. They go through, you know, everything that our officers go through, concerts, weather. Uh, the majority of time, really happy people. Um, and then, you know, that small percentage of unhappy people and they've, they've been outstanding this uh concert season as well too. So I just want to mention those guys. Any questions for me at all?
No, thanks, Chief. Councilmember comments and committee reports?
Um, I, um, I went to Parks and Rec yesterday and um it was Eric Nichols and um Maureen and Mimi. Um, so it was us and they, and Scott was there and we were discussing kind of what the priority was with the park or the Prac, um Parks and Recreation and uh they, they really want to complete the town park. That's kind of all their comments. They want, we discussed um having the plaza done and the pavilion and we also discussed how um the north courts will be possibly six pickleball courts. Um, and let's see what else. The second was the nature preserve. They want to fix the parking. Um, and then we also discussed the cemetery, but uh like a step-by-step process um on trying to get that going with what has been in the process for quite some time. So that was about it. Then I don't know if Scott wants to add anything else, but is what we, they, we said at the, we said, um, it was mentioned that the council really wanted to work on the amphitheater and they really want the priority to be with the park first. That was their comments.
I agree with them. Wouldn't that be great to get it done?
Yes.
And get it off the budget.
Well, I have.
Great. Any other council member comments or committee reports? Great, uh, meeting agenda review. No changes tonight that I've heard of. Next item is adjournment and we will meet back here in about ten minutes to start the meeting. Thank you, everyone.